Okay, I just turned on the recording at seven o'clock and you do have a quorum.
Very good. Welcome everyone to the November 3rd meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft Team and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number, 603-664-0240 and the meeting conference ID number. First on the agenda is the minutes. We'll move those to the end so we can get right into the agenda items. Number two, we have Sunset Rock LLC, request by applicant for site review to increase their operation in Barrington from 83 points to a total of 88 acres. Do we have someone representing Sunset Rock LLC?
Yes, this is Michael Wright with a respect.
Hello, Michael.
Hello, how are you?
Very good. Yourself?
Good.
If you want to give us an overview of what's up.
What we would like to do is request for a continuation on this project.
Alright. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Wright?
Actually, I have a comment. This is Ron.
Yes.
Mr. Wright, I believe you're.
Ron, can I get you a hold of everything? I never did a roll call and I need to before we get started. My apologies. I was jumping right in. Let's see who we have here tonight. I'm James Jennison, the Chair of the Planning Board. Jeff Brand, are you with us? He's coming in now. Steve Diamond.
Yep.
Donna Masucci.
Here.
I believe Andy Knapp is absent tonight. He's over at the polls. Ron Allard.
Present.
One, two, three, four. We have enough for a quorum and Jeff Brand will be joining us shortly. Apologize for that.
No problem.
Jamie.
Yes.
It's Marsha. This is really a request to consider, to continue consideration because this isn't an application that's actually been accepted by the board, but in our preliminary work on it, we found that they needed it to provide a couple more things. So the best thing for them to do was request to continue consideration.
Alright. Do we have a date? Very, very low, Jeff.
I gotta get closer.
I can hear you, Marsha. Jeff is very faint.
Alright, try to speak louder.
That's better.
Okay, I'm gonna mute everybody. If anybody needs to talk, you can hit the microphone. If you're on the phone, hit star six. I think that might help with everybody's communication if we don't have noise coming out of everybody's mic. Alright, so Jamie, when you want to talk, I'm muted. You can go ahead.
Jamie, this is Ron. I know they're looking to continue, but I believe Mr. Wright's letter is incorrect. It says map 39 lot four. I believe that's 36.
Ron, this is Barbara. It is 36.
Two thirty-six lot four?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted. Map two thirty?
Yeah, your letter says map two thirty-nine.
Oh, okay. Fix that.
Alright. Do we have a date, Marsha or Mr. Wright as to where you want to, looking to continue to?
I would leave that to Mr. Wright. We had anticipated a couple of, to the next meeting.
Yeah, the seventeenth I believe was mentioned.
Marsha?
Yes.
This is Barbara. It has to be the seventeenth because you haven't sent notices out.
Right. Okay, yes, the seventeenth. Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, okay.
If the, does the, if the board has any questions for Mr. Wright or a motion to continue consideration to the seventeenth would be in order.
Wait, so notice has already been put out that it's going to be continued to that date? Is that what you said, Marsha?
Correct.
So is that the usual question that Jeff asks, I'm gonna ask, is that realistic, whatever they need to do for it to be done at that time?
Yes, because what they needed to do was provide us with a conditional use permit because this is a gravel excavation and prior to, just a few short years ago, it wasn't required, but the zoning changed and the application came in at the at the very last minute and by the time I reviewed it, I realized they hadn't applied for the excavation permit too. So.
Okay.
That's why, okay?
There's no other questions. A motion continue to November seventeenth.
I make a motion, we will continue this application to November seventeenth.
I second that.
A motion by Ron Allard, second by Steve Diamond, James Jennison, I, Jeff Brand.
Jeff Brand, I.
Steve Diamond.
I.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Motion granted. We'll see you on the seventeenth.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Next up, Haley Revocable Trust, request by applicant for site review. I believe Mr. Cole is here. Can I continue as well?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we anticipated new materials being available for the board and they were, they were delayed a little bit. So we'd like to request continuance for this application.
Do we have a date in mind?
About two weeks would be great. We would have plenty of time to get you the information.
That's for the seventeenth as well. If the board doesn't have any questions, a motion for continuance would be in order.
I'll make a motion to, for a continuance on application for the crossings at Village Center till seventeen of November.
I second that.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Donna Masucci. We'll call it two thirty-eight thirty-six V dash twenty. Steve Diamond.
I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Jennison, I. Donna Masucci.
Masucci, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Continue to the seventeenth. We'll see you then, Mr. Cole.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Number four, one twenty-five Development LLC, request by applicant to amend the previous conditional approval from fifty-five residential lot and five commercial lots to fifty-eight residential lots and four commercial lots adjacent to Route 125. Mr. Cole, that is you again?
It is.
Whenever you're ready.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, for the record, Scott Cole from Beals Associates. And I have here Mr. Joseph Falcione from Route 125 Development, owner of the property. I do have a couple plans, if available. Could I get permission to access the screen?
Yes, you can. If you just hit the little icon with the arrow in at the square, then you can share what you need in that.
Everybody see that?
I can. I can.
Okay, so just to bring everybody up to date, I'm sure everybody realizes when we were previously at the planning board, this was the plan that was conditionally approved for the subdivision. Ongoing work has been commenced. We've been working quite a bit with our highway engineers, Vanessa Associates, and going back and forth with New Hampshire DOT. As a result of that, we have made a couple changes. I just wanted to bring attention to the existing plan, which is in front of you. The north access, which is towards the Rochester side along this entry off of 125, has actually been removed. We have added a cul-de-sac at the, what was the September Drive intersection and then a through road going back down towards the south. So that brings us to the new plan here. So what we have done is we have revised the design with a cul-de-sac, as you can see there, with a very short access to it being 160 feet long. We have added a through road roughly of 900 feet from that intersection down to the main intersection to the southern entrance. And negotiations with New Hampshire DOT, this seemed to be the best result to coordinate with their needs and Joseph's needs for the subdivision. After commencing on this design, in reviewing the plan, we noticed that what used to be prior lot C5, a very large commercial lot of 12.7 acres, which was on the north end of the property, no longer had a very good viable use as far as commercial property. The lot itself is surrounded by wetlands and wetland buffers, did not have direct access to 125, which caused an issue as to any commercial vehicles would have to go through the residential subdivision, which in a normal course is not a very good idea for safety concerns and just the normal practices. So we had made an application to the zoning board because there is a 500-foot commercial overlay along the fringe of this property. We made an application to the board to allow residential use within that zone for access reasons. It was a unanimous decision. They allowed us to put in three conventional sized lots within the lot that used to be the commercial C5 lot and we even had extra area. We added three and a half more acres into the open space, which was more than above what is required for the subdivision. The road is a very simple design. As you can see, it consists of a cul-de-sac. Again, the throat is 160 feet long, a good sized bulb. If anybody's familiar with the second phase of Village Place, it's the same design there in the cul-de-sac. It's depressed with drainage in the center. It's a very large radius for any kind of emergency vehicles. And we have relayed also to the road department, it actually provides a very good snow storage area. They have the availability, if they wish, they could actually plow it in a reverse direction, put all the snow inside, which makes a lot better access for the driveways.
Excuse me, Scott.
You need to scroll your page.
That plan, plan isn't up on the screen.
The color display plan?
Yes.
You can't see that color display plan?
There's nothing on the screen. I can bring it up for you if you don't have it.
So I'm gonna try to share it again. Let's see.
Want me to bring it up for you? I can do it.
It's not coming up on my share tray. I'm not sure why.
Okay, it should be up now.
Yep. Okay, I apologize for that. So if everybody can see the plan here, I'll reiterate, we have a cul-de-sac here in this direction. That's where the access used to be down to 125. Very, you know, very simple design, similar to Village Place. The connector road is a 900-foot connector road leading down to the previous entrance. That road actually engineering wise is a much more viable road than we previously had. The location coming across from the storage units up to the cul-de-sac was a very steep grade of eight percent with steep sideslopes going down to the wetlands. This one is a very gradual road with a maximum grade of five and a half percent because we're able to come in at a higher point in the project. So the road is actually a safer, better design. With this being a simple connector road, the actual road geometry is very simple and in fact, because the project is large enough to maintain all of the drainage features, we didn't have to move any of the ponds or anything like that. So the major drainage aspects actually remain the same, even though we slightly changed the road geometry. So with that being the case, and you know, in our history with doing projects in town, we do know this will be critically reviewed at New Hampshire DES. So we were gonna see if the board felt that it would be necessary for an engineering review. We are very familiar with the regs and the review engineer from the first review. We think we've addressed all that commentary, so we don't believe it's actually necessary for an engineering review. All of the major aspects are relatively same on the project, remain unchanged. We need to reapply to New Hampshire DES for the AOT and finalize with New Hampshire DOT. And other than that, we are on our, well, well on our way with this project. So at that point, I'll leave it up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Does the board have any questions? I'm sure that they do.
I have something. Yep. So I can appreciate that the DOT would have priorities around minimizing the points of access to 125, but that's not the same as what the town's priorities ought to be and were expressed around this project in the past, particularly around connectivity and relieving pressure of congestion off of 125 so that there are well-spaced, signalized intersections is what the corridor study for 125 specified there should be that we need to head towards. And so you brought up concerns of access on the far end and there's an obvious solution to how to get access to that area, which is at some point, someone is going to pay to make that intersection, it's currently called, I guess, substitute road or, you know, the intersection just north of this property, to be a usable one someday, no matter the cost. So I want to make sure the people who are contributing to traffic in this area are contributing to that effort.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, we've certainly gone extreme lengths with New Hampshire DOT, working with our highway engineers who are certainly more adequate to discuss than I am with them. And this is the result of that. It certainly meets the regulations. You know, the old Green Hill entrance, even going back very far in the planning process with the board, I think we've kind of beat that one to death. We did leave a right-of-way to the actual old Green Hill. We relocated it to what the town manager wanted. That used to come off where the cul-de-sac is, but he liked it aligned with the new road, which we did provide for that. It's only a relatively short distance from the access to the new intersection. That is a widened section already for planning for the commercial use. It's a left and right turnout and entrance. So it's a very wide entranceway for the project, which we think is suitable.
So just to review, if I understand correctly, the there is no, there is no drivable through route to the class six road and back that you are proposing to have open?
No, that was even on the first go-around.
So it won't be drivable? There'll be a gate there? It's, obviously there's a connection of road, it looks like, according to this drawing.
Yeah, no, what it is, is a paper right-of-way and per the previous conditional approval, the agreement was to actually put boulders at the end of it to prohibit any kind of vehicular pedestrians coming down that way or going out.
You say a paper right-of-way. Does that mean the road is not actually going to be built?
There's no road proposed on that white section you see at the north. It's a walking trail, which again was agreed upon by the planning board for only pedestrian access, not vehicular.
It's been a while. I had, I'm remembering some of this now. I, it just looked like a road when I see it now. So, okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. One question.
I'm sorry, sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, so I think you already answered. I was trying to discern from the plans as far as now with the increased capacity for the actual entrance into the development and also because the town hall will be there on lot C1, that that the double lanes exiting the development, that's what you said, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that was, as part of the previous design anyhow, there will be a right-hand turn lane and a left-hand turn lane. And due to the required radius required for any kind of commercial use coming out of those two lots, it's a 50-foot radius versus the regular standard of a, believe a 25. It's a very wide, suitable entrance for any kind of vehicle.
Another question I had, had to do with, I think, on, I was looking, let's see, sixteen, seventeen. It had to do with the easements. Maybe this is a case. I couldn't go back and find the original set of plans, but it appears that you've added some easements that have to do with the drainage systems. I think there's some down around, what is it, lot 12 and 13? Yeah, in between lot 12 and 13, there's also easement to do with, there's gonna be a drive from the cul-de-sac to get back up into that, those three new lots. In particular, it's gonna go across the lot R1 and up past R2 to R3. So those are, those are new easements, are they?
That's correct, sir. Yep, yep. Those are displayed on two sets plans. Most of the drainage easements themselves have not, have not changed because most of the drainage features remain the same. We did apply driveway easements, as you said, for those lots to the new lots, the conventional lots.
Okay, so we need, as noted by the planner, we're gonna need to see the draft easement language for the drainage and that, those access.
That's fine.
And are those easements part of R1 and R2? Are they on R1 and R2 land?
That's what the plan showed.
Yes, for the driveway access to R3. They will have a driveway access across those two lots.
So what's different about, sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
What's different about this plan from what there was before essentially is that if a tree were to fall or some other incident were to occur in one spot, there would be literally no other way for a vehicle to get in or out on, on this, if this goes ahead the way it is, while previously it would mean there'd be another option. There are a lot of people in there.
There are. I guess you'd look at it as, other than the very short entranceway, I think it's, I can't see it on the screen at that scale. I'd have to get off and look at mine. I think it's like 400 feet. You know, which is certainly shorter than the allowable length of a cul-de-sac. Every other portion of the property would have two directions to get to that point.
Joe, I see you're trying to talk. If you're trying to communicate with the board, you gotta undo your mic.
Oh, sorry about that. I said it complies with the thousand-foot minimum and I had to review this to meet that standard with the fire department and the fire department has signed off to the planning board that it's adequate for public safety.
Another question I had is looking at your your letter from Department of Environmental Services giving you a permit. It states that in mitigation, that the conference the conservation restrictions to be placed on preservation areas shall be written both existing and all future property owners shall be subject to the restrictions. So has that, do we have either paperwork that documents that, those restrictions?
Those have been submitted and approved by the state, state, yes, and we will submit those.
Okay.
Just quickly, back to Steve's point. So from 125 to that new circular cul-de-sac and from 125 to the furthest point of the loop, that's less than a thousand feet?
Yes, I can't move the screen. The only distance that is less than a thousand feet is the driveway, which we got, we had to apply for ZBA permit for that, which hasn't been mentioned?
Yeah, the distance from 125 to the first intersection, Mr. Chairman, is 400 feet.
Right, I guess, on Steve's, you know, the big loop is really just a cul-de-sac with one lane in, like Steve was saying, it's kind of a lot of road. I kind of agree with him in some regards, that, how wide's the road through the loop now? Through the, through the whole.
Twenty-two feet. But anywhere along the project, other than the first two means of getting to that section. So it'd be no different than a short 400-foot cul-de-sac, even though the amount of road beyond that is longer.
I guess that's where I was kind of confused because it doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere. So it's not like it's like a short cul-de-sac because it doesn't go anywhere but to itself. It might, I don't know if I'm looking at that incorrectly, but.
It will, Jamie, there's, I actually looked at this design as more favorable than the last, but if you look at it, there's multiple directions you can go from. Yes, at the end, you initially end up at the, at 125, but that's also a wider road that can handle it, but it has numerous shorter ways to get there. And I did go over the cul-de-sac itself with Mark, the road agent, and he was okay with that. We talked about, you know, how large it was. We consulted to with Scott and he was comfortable with that, able to get his, his equipment around that. Just like it was mentioned by actually going backwards and putting the snow inside the cul-de-sac, inside the center of the cul-de-sac. So I mean, I want to, that was a concern of mine and I went over with Mark and he was real comfortable with it.
Right. And I, I mean, I think that's great that they have that, they waited, I guess to Steve's point, but does it meet our regulations? Because it's really just a giant loop. It's not like it has an egress. So I mean, they like it and I get that and that's, that's positive, but does it, does it meet? Does it meet the regulations because it's so long?
Well, what part?
But it's not necessarily that long because you can go out and go to the right and go to the, it doesn't have to be, there's multiple ways to turn out of that, which makes it compliant with the regulations.
Alright, I guess that's, that's the, that's the gray area I'm looking at because if they had seven inner rows that just, you drove around in a circle, you weren't really going anywhere and you'd have more, you know, I guess that was the thing. The one before, it just seems like it's a safer egress with two and I can understand from the 125 perspective that it's not.
So what, which, which part are you questioning, Jamie? I don't, I don't understand. The cul-de-sac itself? Or?
The length, the length of road, the length of road from entrance to the end, you know, just because you can go up and go left and come around, I don't know, you know, that's what I was, I would just want a clarification. It meets the regulations for a cul-de-sac and it's not a.
Well, the only one-way part, Jamie, is the orange part right there, the part across the orange part. Other than that, there's two ways to get there. Other than that, there's two ways to get there.
Correct.
So what is the, uh, what exactly is the reason behind that rule? I mean, really, that's what matters, right? For safety reasons? Uh, do we actually understand that?
My understanding of it is, is, is to provide, you know, basically safe ass, uh, access. I mean, it varies from community to community and sometimes, you know, we could look at it and say, well, 120 feet will be, 100 I mean, 1,000 feet or 1,050 feet or 1,200 feet, you know, may work. Our, our rule we have is 1,000 feet and that's the one we base our decisions on. You know, the fire chief might, you know, be willing to go a little farther, you know, depending on the design. Um, he didn't have an issue with this one and clearly this one's under 1,000 feet.
Okay, that's all. I just.
I wonder if we could get the fire chief to explain his reasoning for, for why the rule exists so that we can understand how to apply it best.
I, I don't believe this is the place, you know, if we want to ask him in another time. Right now, we're here basically to apply the regulations and basically to focus on the changes that were made to the conditionally approved project, not to rehear the whole project. I just wanna, you know, remind folks of that.
Well, to, to Steve's point though, couldn't we, couldn't we look at, uh, that orange piece? Could we look at the landscape on both sides? And obviously the, to me, the biggest concern is the tree falling across the road. Um, I don't remember the town hall landscaping plan, but are there one lots of commercial ones at town hall? Do we have a lot of trees right along that road?
I think if you zoom in, knowing this is also, uh, open drainage, uh, you, you'll have quite a distance on each side before you have existing mature vegetation that will remain in that area. Um, there's also, as you come in, opposite of the first intersection, that's all gonna be cleared because there's a system right there. So, so that won't have any vegetation there at all and from there on, you're back up to two ways of egress.
The only time I can remember a dead end, well, a loop road, where the beginning of the loop was actually over 1,000 square feet was Autumn Lane and that was quite a few years ago when I was on the planning board. And the reason why the planning board allowed them to go like an extra 20 feet was because there was all wetlands there, so they couldn't make the turnout to make it work. So it went like 1,020 feet to the beginning of the loop of the road instead of being 1,000 feet. Other than that, I think it's always been 1,000 feet or less.
All right. And then was, was there a previous question about building the road in that commercial buffer on the backside? And is that not, I recollect somebody bringing up something about construction in that buffer. Um, and I don't know if that's an issue.
Was that a question for me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I don't know if any of the board members remember that. I'm, I'm foggy in that, but I thought there was some issue about building in that buffer, um, that commercial buffer that, uh, around the, the backside and between the residential and the commercial lots. I thought that, that had been brought up previously on the other plans and I didn't, I, I'm just trying to jog my memory.
Yeah, no, that's actually a good point. As you can see on the orange on the plan now, uh, in the rear of those lots and on the left side of, uh, what is now R1, 2, 3, 4, we are providing that 100-foot buffer along all of the back rear propellants of those between the residential use.
I guess maybe the question is, uh, being a conservation subdivision or cluster subdivision, whatever we call it here, um, uh, if, if there's a, a buffer, uh, around the residential part and I guess the does, is the road being there, um, allow it to serve the purpose it's supposed to be there for, if that makes sense?
Yeah, that was my question, I guess, as well, is, is can you put that road, can you use that buffer for the road?
In my opinion, you can because the way that buffer is set up was to separate the residential use from the commercial use. So you have over 100 feet with the road in that other space left. So you have more than 100 feet from the residential lots to the commercial lot, which was the whole idea of the 100-foot. You still got the 100.
It's not much of a visual buffer.
It wasn't supposed to be a visual buffer. It was just supposed to be a buffer, is what it said.
It seems like it's beginning to lose the purpose of a conservation subdivision.
Well, given the amount of land to the north, uh, to the east, even, even up to the, the northwest, I, that area hasn't changed. The actual footprint hasn't changed. So how is it less of a conservation, uh, development?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it loses the conservation aspect. It's just whether that buffer, it's appropriate to put a road in the buffer, I guess, was my question.
Well, the 100-foot buffer for the conservation subdivision was for the outside of the whole lot. Which, and that, and that more than does it because the commercial's part of this lot of record.
Right.
If anything, you've now added more residential to the development. So you're actually, you know, providing more protection to your, your residential portion.
And this wasn't to protect the residential subdivision that's here. It was to keep, it was to protect the other areas around a conservation subdivision to keep it separated. So the buffer to the adjacent lots like Deer Ridge and stuff like that, that exceeds that 100 feet by far. And that's what the whole idea of that 100-foot around the conservation subdivision, like I said, was to separate the conservation subdivision from the other lots, which it does.
Uh, refresh my memory. The, the road that goes to Green, Green Hill, is that, that's pedestrian, you said? That white part that goes up to Green Hill?
Yep, that's actually, it's a, gonna be a deeded right-of-way. And as per, uh, the conditional approval, part of the design is to actually put in a trail at a maximum of 10% um, so people can walk and enjoy the trail and have access to the Class 6. It will not be drivable and there will be boulders put on the end, um, at the intersection with the Class 6 portion.
So you're intending it being like a gravel, gravel?
Yeah, yeah, at-grade gravel.
Let me ask a question. It, it, could we, instead of boulders, put a, a gate there? In case of an extreme emergency, we could get in that way with emergency vehicles or something? Even though driving across gravel? Put like a Knox box there with a key? So the, the fire department has a key?
I guess like that, Joe, would you mind? I mean, that was part of the conditional approval. I don't actually remember all the discussion we had on it. I think the end result was to put boulders there, but.
The, the reason why they didn't want a gate was that last section of a couple of hundred feet could never support a fire truck. It could support a trail, but it's not built as wide as a road would be built. And.
What about an emergency vehicle such as an ambulance or something?
The, the ambulance wouldn't take him anywhere. An ambulance couldn't get down that.
That, that's what the issue was, was Old Green Hill Road was so bad that you couldn't get a vehicle down it anyways. But this had the option of being made into the road in the future if Old Green Hill Road was ever upgraded. So at that time, it would be a through road. So even though it's going to be a walking trail now, it has the future potential to be in a roadway if Old Green Hill Road ever gets upgraded. So as it stands right now, you couldn't get an emergency vehicle in Old Green Hill Road.
And I think the board has to focus, like I said before, on the changes and not try to revisit the, the whole project.
Well, I agree with that much. We had, we had two ins and outs before and now we're in one. Just kinda, kinda we're focusing on that, but I hope you say.
So, back to my point.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, back to my point. Um, so the orange lot, uh, near 125, that's commercial and that will probably at some point be developed, right?
That's correct.
So that's part of, I, I think buffering around residential area is important.
C2.
Which one are you talking about?
Lots, C3 and C4 don't get their access off this subdivision road. They don't have anything to do with it for traffic reasons. When and if we get a use, we have to apply to DOT based upon what other, whatever the volume of that use is to construct and access a shared driveway to those two lots. And mainly what I've been doing is trying to, you know, scan what the least traffic generating use would be. And at that point, I have to go for another driveway curb cut to serve those two small lots.
So, so the access would be off of, uh, 125, Mr. Felzone?
Yeah, a driveway, not, not a roadway.
Right about where that red mark is.
Yes, correct.
That's right, Jeff. Yep. We had actually put that for display purposes. Be a shared driveway.
And, and that eliminated, that eliminated a lot of traffic in our traffic count to this because I would never do a drive-through there. Drive-throughs are way too much traffic. A use with a drive-through, I would never consider that. Same with the lot across from the town hall. So most likely that would be an office use or, you know, something that's, that doesn't generate a lot of traffic.
So if we look at C3 and C4, you've got 100-foot buffer on the back of those lots uh, between new lot R1 and lot 47, 48. Uh, and those aren't gonna, that buffer will not be disturbed because access will be off of 125.
Correct.
Okay. I was assuming they were going through that buffer to access those two lots on the backside of the subdivision. Um. All right. Does the board have any more questions?
Yeah, the other thing, when I was looking at the DES approval was, it says conservation area shall be survey, surveyed by a licensed surveyor and marked by monument states prior to construction, if this survey determines the parcel is less than the size, permit, permit has, shall submit to N H D E S for review. Is that included on the plan somewhere? That, uh, that, that those areas have to be staked prior to construction?
Uh, I don't, I'd have to check two sets plans. I'm not actually sure. It is part of the permit, which is part of record.
I understand, but, you know, you've got the contracts are gonna be following the plans. That seems like an appropriate, uh, note to go onto the plans.
We can certainly add that if you like.
I don't know. What do you think, Marcia? Doesn't that seem appropriate? That's item, uh, 21 on, uh, the DES approval.
Thank you.
Sure, I have. Was this, was this, uh, generated after the conditional approval from before?
This is the 13 October letter from New Hampshire DES. It gives them the approval. It gives them the approval data. And so that's one of, that's condition 21 on the permit.
Part of the wetland permit.
Oh, part of the wetland permit?
We don't have any problem adding that.
Yeah, you can add that.
Okay. It just seems.
Oh, that's fine. So, Mr. Felzone, you're saying that, uh, you're, you're restricting consideration. You're not going to consider any use of that commercial lot that will generate significant traffic? Can you be a little bit more specific about that?
Yeah, well, I can just give you an answer, uh, uh, an answer because, for instance, uh, I don't know if it's the gentleman's business across the street, this, the storage warehouse. We were contacted by a company. We don't want that there, but that is a very low generator of traffic. And versus if you had a, just as an example, a bank would a drive-through tell up? When you add the drive-through, DOT looks at the numbers totally different, differently, as higher generating. So we, we would look for a low volume, like a, an office space, a real estate office. Uh, you know, until you get the tenant, you don't know exactly what it generates for trips, but once you do get the tenant, you can figure out, okay, does it work?
Well, that's, so you're saying what's driving whatever, uh, development will be done on C3 and C4 is going to be driven by whatever it is that you can get for a shared driveway permit uh, out of, out of the state and therefore that's being driven by what kind of traffic load you're going to be adding in that particular location. And, and, and so that's really what's determining factor.
Right.
And you're not gonna be able to have a major, in that particular spot, you're not gonna be able to add a major load to the traffic.
Correct.
And all those lots will be coming back in front of the planning board for site review.
Yeah.
All right. Um, any more questions? We'll, uh, look for some public comment.
Well, well, just a, just a second here. Let me ask about procedure here because is this a modification of the previous application? Is this a new application? It modifying the previous approval? What, Marcia, where are we at with this?
Jeff, this would need to be accepted. Even though it's an amendment, you need to accept it as complete so that you can then have your public hearing. Thank you.
I was going. So to, uh, okay, I make a motion to accept the, uh, amendment to 223 dash 24 and 26, R dash 20 as complete.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Nay.
Uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Jennison, aye. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Application is accepted as complete. Um, do you have more questions, Jeff?
I know. I, I just, I, I just thought we needed to accept this before we had to public hearing.
Sure. I was under the, it, I, it was described as an, an add-on as opposed to a new application. Um.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to get a clarification from Marcia so that we.
Well, I always get confused when, when we say on one hand, don't look at the whole thing, but it's a new application. So a new application, you look at the whole thing. Uh, you know, I'm always juggling those things.
It's an amendment. If we vote to accept it, then we're in the clear. We're, we're covered no matter what.
Right. All right. Uh, if there's anyone in the public listening that would like to make comments, um, we'll open public comment at this time. I'll try and look at the chat box. Hearing done, we will close public comment. Any further questions by the board?
Well, there was a question asked that we haven't answered here, which is, do we?
Do we want to send it?
Yes, do we want to send it? Uh, I, I guess, you know, I got the floor, uh, or the microphone. Uh, that my opinion is that they, uh, you know, this whole, they haven't changed any of the, uh, locations or sizing of the detention ponds. Uh, I, their engineering has been through a review. Uh, with the exception of the cul-de-sac, you know, I, I guess I'm feeling fairly confident at this point that, uh, that this would not necessarily need to go for review. It could, but I don't know that it necessarily needs to.
Any other opinions from the board? I mean, I didn't pull out the old one and do a side-by-side comparison, looking for anything or everything that might, may or may not have been changed. So that's, um.
A road is in a different place than it was before. I, I, I don't know every bit of, of how to apply the rules and, uh, the engineering factors that could be involved there. But, I mean, it's a small section.
I'd just like to point out that they still have to get DES's approval for these changes and that's kinda gonna give you almost that third part.
And that's kind of going to give you almost that third-party look at it. Not, no, you wouldn't be your engineer, but DES is acting as like an engineer.
Yeah. Other opinions from the board? I'm sorry, Jeff.
We've been through this before. I mean, DES is going to give it another look. I, I'm, you know, I think Steve's right that, you know, there is a small change in the roads, but does that significantly change the drainage system or paths or, or detention ponds? And it doesn't appear to. And with the DES look, you know, I, it, that seems reasonable that we let them take a look at it and see if there's any issues. Obviously, we know from the other case that we got coming up about Drew Pond, DES does give things a pretty good scrub, so, which caused extensive changes in that case. So DES looking at this, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I think I'm comfortable too. I mean, I, I don't see significant change in the impervious surface. The roads, the new roads seem to have certainly no more slope than the other ones. So I think a DES scrub would satisfy me.
All right, Donna, what about you?
No, I agree. Looking at the, the plans and everything, it looks like they enhanced it in a better way. I think a lot of thought went into this, and I don't think it should go to engineer, in my own opinion.
Okay. All right, then we will forego sending it to DuBois and King.
I, I didn't, you, you talked about, you know, the significance or lack of significance of the changes, but I didn't hear an opinion one way or the other from you.
I, I don't think it's necessary, probably.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, do we need to vote on that, Marcia? Or just the consensus is fine?
The consensus is fine.
Any other things to address? Any other questions or comments?
So I know we've discussed this in the past, but with the change of the access, I suggest that it might be reasonable for the path to the north to be built, not paved, but built up to the level that a vehicle could get through.
I, I would caution only because the, that would be a road to, at this point, just about nowhere, other than if you were driving in off-road vehicles, side-by-side, whatever it is. I just don't think it's a fiscally smart thing to do at this point. There are still multiple, you know, I, I see your concerns, Steve, but the chances of that people not being able to get out of this road, given the width of it and, and the emergency response time from not only Barrington, but the city of Rochester, I, I don't think there would be much, much of a, a delay. It would be a, a very rare instance than something would happen, in my opinion.
Marcia, it wouldn't be fiscally sensible for who? I mean, eventually, it was said that there will be a through road here. As we assume, someone will make a road that goes the rest of the way through, and someone was going to need to pay to improve that section of road. And paper street.
Well, given, having been out there multiple times, having looked at this now multiple times, there is one other very nice gentleman in that owns the law, the land along that. Will this ever be upgraded? Would cost a pretty penny, and it really, at this point, would be more of a benefit probably to, to one individual. And the cost of it, I mean, I don't see this happening maybe in fifty years. That's how, that's what we're talking about. The access is there, the easement or whatever is there. But to think that we're going to construct an emergency access that would satisfy, I mean, if somebody, if really in a bind, if we're talking, you know, the odds are one in a million to get out there, yeah, somebody might be able to take a, take a jacked-up off-road vehicle and go through that road. But that, that's in pretty tough shape out there, you know?
I think what's.
Take a snowmobile.
I think what Steve is saying is if, in, in, in some stroke of miracle, in five years or ten years, that road is built, we don't, we don't have connectivity. We have no way to ensure connectivity. No one's ever going to connect that road. If substitute road is built to a passable standard at any point in the future, there's no mechanism for that section to be finished from this development to that road.
Well, wait a minute.
I disagree.
I disagree.
That's the whole point of putting that, that paper street, so to speak, or trails road in there, there, that, that there is the possibility of a connection there. That's the whole point of putting it there.
Let me ask a question. Between lots forty-two and forty-one, previously, wasn't the, wasn't there access to those lots off of what is now September Drive in that leading up to Green Hill Road?
There was a modification actually made so that, you know where the cul-de-sac is. Now those, that right-of-way that, that, well, I don't want to call it temporary, but the right-of-way that goes up to Old Green Hill Road, now it goes straight through. There's not driveways off of it. I believe that was moved over a lot.
Right. Okay, just wait a minute. Now, as I recall, we had this discussion that that road, under the previous plan, would be developed to town standards up to the back of lots. It would not be developed from the back of the lots out to Green Hill Road.
That's correct.
And we said that because that way, because we said, if you were ever going to develop the road, you didn't want to have to go in with, in between those two lots. It made more sense to put the base in for that road while you were doing the development and then stop it at the back of the lot, at lot lines there. And then, because then you, if you ever wanted to develop that road, you could bring the back end of it up to standards without affecting the lots which are already developed. That's how I recall the discussion.
And, and that's correct. And that's what we're going to do.
Okay, so actually, September Drive from that intersection, that four-way intersection, from that intersection up through, along lots forty-one and forty-two would be, that roadbed would be put in there up to the lot line. Is that correct?
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Scott from Beals, that's not correct, Joe. That's not what we have on the plans. You can see it right there. The initial design was, as you said, Jeff, but it was to where the driveway locations were, which was where the structures were. It was not to the rear of the properties. And then the grading was instructed to be no more than ten percent. So anyone would have the ability to actually walk it because by nature, I believe it's like fifteen percent. That has been changed. So the driveways now, because that right-of-way was in a different location, the driveways are not needed to come off of that because they're actually at a better grade on the proposed road. So the intent now is to just have the trail constructed at a grade no more than ten percent for as long as it needed to be until it caught up with the existing terrain.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem building the road to that hundred or hundred and fifty feet if that's what you want. I have no problem doing that.
Okay. I, I mean, that seems to be kind of the middle ground to address everybody's concerns about providing for connectivity in the future and also doing what makes sense from construction standpoint. At this point, I mean, you don't want to be picking up that whole thing, trying to redo the slope, trying to do things after you've already developed lots forty-one and forty-two. At least, I wouldn't want, if I owned one of those places.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. We can certainly do that, as Joe said. I just, I just wanted to be clear, you know, because that's not what's displayed on the plans now. So I don't want anybody to think that, you know, that wasn't the intention. But we can actually modify the plans and show that road will be built at hundred and fifty, or hundred and fifty feet, whatever the town maintains.
Okay, so even Jamie, does that address some of your concerns?
It does, I think. So are you saying that to the residential lot lines, before you start entering the green space, that road will be built to the full width and paved?
Whatever, whatever distance we agreed to, as Jeff mentioned in the first plan, I don't know if that's two hundred feet, a hundred and eighty feet, or three hundred feet. That's what we will do. We'll build the road.
But in the first plan, that was just gravel, though. It wasn't paved, was it?
I believe it was gravel.
Uh, I actually think Marcia and I argued and got that paved up, at least up to the driveways.
Right, and now we don't have driveways to demarc that area. So I think gravel's fine.
From an erosion standpoint, if you're going to put that up there, you know, I, I'm not hard over on this, but it might make sense to do it, but.
You know, this is Ron. From, from my perspective, if you pave it, it's going to be, it's going to be a great place for kids to play. Street hockey or whatever. Lots, lots forty-one and forty-two may not like that, but it'd be a great place for kids to do stuff.
It's more apt. It'll be parking for people to go walking out in the green space. But I think.
If it were me, if it were me, Jamie, it'd be street hockey.
Can you come to some kind of direction that, you know, something that we could actually put in a notice of decision that, that the applicant can follow to, is it paved, not paved? Is it at a, I think the consensus was a, to the end of the property line.
I, I would think whatever, whatever it showed in the first approval that I was supposed to do, I'll do.
Yeah, I, I think it's hard to figure out what that is because it's changed. Because it was going through the driveways. There's two driveways coming off that spur road, if you will. So that was kind of where we ended it. So now there's no driveways coming off that portion. So where do you, where do you go with it?
All right. Well, the simplest way to do this would be to say, from that intersection to the rear lot lines of forty-two and forty-one, that that road, you know, be, the roadbed be installed. The only question is whether we would like it to be asphalted or not. Asphalt would help with erosion control, as well as people within the development accessing that area back there. So, you know, but, so, put in the road from the intersection up to the rear lot lines to, do we want it paved or not?
I really think it's paved. I'm leaning towards paved.
For clarification, I just opened up the previous plan set. And you were right, Jeff. It was paved to a distance of two hundred feet, and it was in a kind of a small hammerhead design because we had the two driveways, which obviously is not required now. So it was paved in that short section in the previous conditional rule.
It's nice to know in my old age, my memory hasn't.
How, how, how deep are those lots, Scott? Those lots, Scott? So two hundred feet, less than two hundred feet, it looks like?
Uh, no, they're, they're pretty close to three hundred feet long.
So do you want to go to the back of the lot? All right, you want to go to the back of the lot line then?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the lot line.
That, that's agreeable.
Okay, let's do that then. Anything else? If there's no other comments or questions, I'll read the draft notice of decision and instruct me where to add. I know we had to add something. It's quite a, it's a long one. All right, dear applicant, this is a form of the Barrington Planning Board, and it's August, no, that's not right, November third meeting. As conditionally approved, your application references above, all of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once the precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months of the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed-upon extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedent. Add the owner's signature to the final plan. Add the wetland scientist stamp and signature to the final plan. Add state subdivision approval number to the plan. Add the New Hampshire DES wetland approval number to the plan. Add the New Hampshire DOT access permit number to the plan. Add the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit number to the plan. Revise the following plan notes. On page twenty-nine of thirty-seven, note two, specify four inches loam and seed, not bark mulch. All plans should reflect current ownership. Correct sheet numbering. Add the following plan revisions.
Jamie, is this, add the, under, I don't know whether, which one it goes under, but we were just talking plan notes. Revised following plan notes. Do we want to put in, add a plan note? The conservation area shall be surveyed by a licensed survey and marked by monuments stakes prior to construction?
I have a, on that one, if that was a requirement of DES for their permit, I think we should just let DES handle it and not start adding their, their requirements to, necessarily to our plan. We could get a really kind of onerous on that, cumbersome on that.
The only reason I, I had suggested that is because having, and Jamie, you're, you're, you know, when people come in to do work and do construction, they follow the plans. So this may exist, and Scott may know about it, and Joe may know about it, but, you know, the people doing the work, they're going to follow the plans. If that's noted on the plans, then that ensures it gets done.
All right.
That's the only suggestion.
Um, what about a note, a note referencing the DES requirements?
Okay, I'm not hard over on it. I, you know, but it's just, and I guess that would go down under number four, actually. Add the following plan notes, but, you know, so what do other people think? That, that's my reasoning for putting it there.
Well, my, my only concern is because they have to follow their NHDES permit, and that's part of their permit?
Well, I, I agree, and we tell them that they have to follow all the regulations, but we still have notes on the plan sets that refer back and say, hey, if you got to change, you know, that, the standard plan notes that we require, even though those are in our regulations and they're required to follow.
Anybody else have an opinion on adding that note? Thanks. Guess we'll, hearing no, no hard opinions, we'll just, we'll let that one stick to DES and follow the DES references, as my suggest. Add the following plan revision. Add select board-approved street names to the final plan, including for R1, R2, R3, if deemed necessary by the fire chief. Add the tax map and lot numbers assigned by the assessing department for the new lots to the final plan. Confer with New Hampshire DES regarding one-foot freeboard and aquatic bench and revise, if necessary, show two-foot paved shoulder.
Okay, Jamie, now, is this where we add the, about that we want the road built to town standards and paved between lots forty-two and, and forty-one?
I think that seems an appropriate place. Would you agree, Marcia?
Yes, feed that to me one more time so I can, I'll fit, I'll fit that in under, I guess, aye.
Sure, okay. September Drive between the intersection and back lot lines of lot forty-two and forty-one shall be constructed to town standards and paved. And Joe, you said you agreed to that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right. Add the following plan notes. Add note indicating the purpose of the plan and existing and proposed use. Pedestrian access between lots fifteen and sixteen is to be constructed as part of Phase Three. Driveway entrances, including culverts and aprons, are to be constructed as part of road construction. All documents for the road between lots forty-one and forty-two shall clearly indicate the road is intended for future public use, and at the time of road acceptance for the development, this section will become class. the road is intended for future public use, and at the time of road acceptance for the development, this section will become Class 6.
So do we wanna leave this one, we, maybe we don't need to put it because we already have it at D?
Wait, what's gonna become Class 6, when?
All right, so any, okay, this road will, this road will be, if you want it to be considered for future access, will need to be considered a Class 6 road, which is, it, it's when the town accepts the subdivision, okay, and starts maintaining the road, we wanna make sure the future access is also considered possible future town, uh, as a possible future town access, so. It'll be Class 6, it'll be unmaintained by the town.
Right, it has to be classified, and if it was five, you'd have to maintain it, so yes, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so I think it's important to leave that in there, uh, right? I don't think it hurts.
We still wanna add the note on 3E, but then, yes, this ought to remain, because this addresses the port, the additional portion of the right away that goes out to Green Hill.
Beyond, right.
And I'll probably flip the numbering so that it, one's right after the other.
That's fair. The deeds are to indicate the homeowners association is responsible for maintenance until such time as the road continues through. Uh, add note, all turnarounds will meet the requirements of the Barrington Fire Department. Add note, individual commercial lots may be required to provide additional fire protection over and above what is shown on the plan. Add note, all utilities shall be installed underground per 1411. Add note, system to be added to appropriate sheets. Uh, number five, applicant will provide draft deed language to be approved by town's attorney for law R1 to include easement language for cemetery access. Proper and complete survey monumentation shall be installed on the properties as a condition to final approval of the application. Granite bounds shall be set at the intersection of existing or proposed lot sidelines with existing proposed streets. Iron pins, pipe or rod are to be placed at all property line corners and angles at all points of curvature and points of tangency. Monuments for the lot being developed shall be placed not more than 300 feet apart in any straight line. The applicant's survey shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the submitted plan. Reference 8.8, the Town of Barrington subdivision regulations. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Provide a $25 check made out to SCRD for the L chip fee. File drawings, five sets of black line plus one set of 11 by 17, final approved plans. One electronic version by PDF or CD must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed by the land surveyor, engineer or architect responsible for the plans. Note, if there are significant changes to be made to the plans as specified above, one full-size check print must be sent to the land use office for review prior to producing these final drawings. General and subsequent conditions, the HOA documents and conveyance of open space shall be recorded at SCRD prior to the sale of any dwelling units in the development. In accordance with RSA 67439, active and substantial development shall mean the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure cost required for the first phase of the development as indicated by a subdivision approved by the planning board within 24 months of said approval. Where approved plans have been properly recorded at the registry of deeds, infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, underground utilities. Compliance with this definition shall also necessitate that a bond or other security to cover costs of said infrastructure requirements for the first phase has been posted with the town prior to the beginning of construction. The second phase shall be to loop to Route 125 and the bond or other security to cover the cost of the infrastructure in the second phase shall be posted prior to the commencement of work in the second phase. Prior to the commencement of.
Jamie, is that correct now, given, didn't the phasing change here with the cul-de-sac?
Um.
There is no second loop to 125. So this wording, is this correct?
We'll have to change this a little bit, I think.
Yeah, I mean, do we have any indication of the phasings on this current plan?
I mean, the thought is same, the language is same, but it's now, what, four phases instead of three?
Yes, it'll be four phases.
Right, and there's no second, uh, loop back to 125 in the second phase. So I think this language has to check, uh. Yeah, so at least that sentence has gotta change, that the second phase shall be the loop 125.
Yeah, well, I think it should, yeah, accurately represent all phases.
We'll attach a phasing plan that shows four phases.
Scott, do you have input on where to end this each phase?
Yeah, the current plan submitted by the board, or to the board, excuse me, within the plan section number 12, still says four phases. First phase would come in the signature drive and then go to the cul-de-sac.
Okay, go slow so I can write this, because I wanna correct this.
Yeah, so we still have four phases. The large loop to the rear is, is in two different phases, Phase 3 and Phase 4.
The one that goes to the right?
Yep. So basically the loop by itself. The top half would be Phase 4.
So Scott, Phase 1 is the initial, the road straight in to the, to the four-way?
That's correct, yep.
And then Fa- Phase 2 would be down to the cul-de-sac?
Yep, to the cul-de-sac, and then loop back to signature drive, that way there's two means of access.
Yeah, and then Phase 3 would be half of the big loop, and Phase 4 would be the backside.
Yep, there you go.
You look worried, Joe, we're just trying to fix the paperwork. We're not changing anything.
I wanna see who's president.
You'll be with, you'll be with Ohio. Next meeting.
Right now Biden's leading in Ohio, uh, 55.6% to uh, 44.8%.
Okay, let's just concentrate on this, try and forget about it, okay?
All right, do you think we have adequate language, Marsha, for that portion?
I, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to, uh, I'll take it right from, from the recording, just so I can make sure. Yeah, I got it right.
I was paying attention, I caught the fact that the wording wasn't correct, come on.
I know, that was a good one, because I, you know, kinda skimmed that one evidently, oh boy.
Well, loop back to 125 could be construed as the, the one entrance. Um, all right, well, I'll read it on, um, to include prior to the commencement of work on in Phase 3 and 4, a bond or other security shall be posted to cover the cost of infrastructure in the applicable phase. The systems required for fire safety shall be installed to Barrington Fire Department specifications. All required fire protection standards shall be operational prior to the issuance of any building permits. Reference 11.5, Barris 1 of the Town of Barrington subdivision regulations. Current use subject property or a portion of its presently in current use, the applicant must provide the Town of Barrington assessing department current use map and/or other items needed to assure requirements of RSA 79A and the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration's rules are satisfied. Think we covered it all?
And just for the boards, I kind of married the previous notice of decision with, um, with the new information, so that was so that we're operating on one notice of decision and not two.
Did, make note that this supersedes the previous one?
Um, those are some of the crossouts.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to approve application 223-24 and 26-RC-20 amendment.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, James Jenison, aye, Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, nay.
Donna Masucci?
Masucci, aye.
Uh, Ron Allard?
Allard, aye.
All right, for, in favor, uh, application, uh, project, I'm sorry, approved, um, congratulations. Marsha, yeah?
Thank you.
All right, have a great night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
I thought you were saying something, Marsha, I'm sorry, um, all right.
Moving around over here.
Uh, all right. Next up, we have Robert DiBerto, request by applicant for a design review for two lot subdivision with waivers on 32.6 acre site on Sloper Road. Mr. Barry, welcome, haven't seen you in quite some time, how you doing?
Not terrible, how are you, sir?
Very good, thank you for being patient, whenever you're ready.
Um, so I'll attempt to share my screen if that's okay. Uh, hmm, apparently I have a lot of things open, hang on just a second. All right, uh, so in case anybody forgot, Christopher Barry with Barry Surveying and Engineering, uh, here tonight representing Rob, uh, Robert DiBerto, Bob DiBerto, on Sloper Road, uh, this is a 30 some odd acre parcel that has about 75 feet of frontage, as you can see here, out on Sloper Road. Uh, the parcel is just barely clipped into the two towns, uh, so we will require a courtesy, uh, review in front of the Stratford Planning Board for the few hundred square feet or less that end up in Stratford, New Hampshire. Um, and, uh, the parcel was created in the, uh, early 90s, uh, from a Fred Drew plan that carved off a lot of the frontage lots here on, uh, Sloper Road, and this is really the remaining piece, um, that exists. Uh, Mr. DiBerto has built a, uh, pretty substantial driveway that runs out, uh, to the back of the parcel, uh, which has, uh, lake frontage on, uh, Long Pond, or, uh, pond frontage on Long Pond. Um, and, uh, what we're looking to do is subdivide the parcel using the backlot ordinance, uh, basically down the center of the, uh, 50 or 75 foot neck, uh, jogging out and then trying to create two equal building areas, uh, with frontage on Long Pond. Uh, we have done a full and complete, uh, boundary survey of the parcel, uh, we've had John Hayes or Jack Hayes, as I know him, uh, delineate the, uh, poorly drained soils in the immediate area of development here. Uh, we've had, uh, Jack delineate the very poorly drained soils, uh, around the uh, prime wetland, um, that's located here, uh, offsite, and we've had him locate the wetlands along, uh, Long Pond also. Uh, there are some small pockets of wetlands, uh, in this area and up in this area. Um, but as you can see from our development plan, uh, we're proposing building areas out at the back of the site, uh, where we show our 4,000 square foot leaching areas, our proposed wells, and our proposed, uh, houses. Uh, we've done this as a design review, uh, because we honestly, uh, had a few details that we really wanted to work out uh, on the plans, um, and we're sort of up against a deadline, uh, we wanted to, uh, give the board an opportunity to review this and comment on it, as well as the staff. Um, and so out of the staff comment, uh, came, uh, one item in particular, uh, and that is we should spend a little bit of time with, uh, Chief Walker, uh, to review, uh, the driveway and make sure that he's comfortable with it, um, or, uh, decide whether or not modification is needed. Um, we do have a wetland permit that is required, uh, at the front of the site here. Um, it is gonna be an after the fact wetland permit, it'll be for, uh, less than 1,000 square feet of impact, uh, to cross, uh, from one side of the wetlands, uh, to the other. And so we are scheduled to meet with the Conservation Commission on the 5th, so Thursday of this, this week, uh, to discuss that and discuss the project in general. Um, we do have, uh, a couple of waivers before the board, uh, because the, um, development really only takes place, uh, and this is such a minor subdivision, we are asking for a waiver to, uh, full existing conditions of the site. Um, as you can see, we've provided, uh, existing conditions of, uh, all of the development area and then areas that we thought were important uh, for the board's review in and around where the driveway, uh, was constructed. Uh, we could provide for, um, lightar style, uh, contours in this area here. Um, and they would be accurate within a few feet or so, but they would not be, uh, as accurate as a, a full survey. Um, and I guess we'd like a little bit of input on, uh, that waiver request, uh, it's something that the board has granted in the past, uh, and so we're asking for the same reasons that it be granted, uh, in this particular case also. Uh, Marsha has a, a couple of comments in her staff review, um, that, uh, I think we'd be, uh, able to handle quite readily, um, and, uh, be back before the board next month with a, with a full application. Um, and some comments in hand from the Conservation Commission, uh, Chief Walker, and more than likely have an application submitted to DES, uh, wetlands permitting, uh, at that point for the, uh, driveway crossing that's taking place in this location here. Um, the town line was established using, uh, survey grade GPS. Uh, we found a, uh, stone, uh, town monument here, uh, there's one projected out much closer to the, uh, Rochester line, which is right next to my office, ironically. Um, and then there's one that is much closer to, uh, the Route 126 corridor. Uh, and we've located that bound as well, so we've survey located the, uh, the town line so that we're sure that we're working in, uh, mostly Barrington and just a little bit in, uh, the town of Stratford. The project is, uh, would be subject to shoreline protection. That really doesn't mean a whole lot, uh, with respect to subdivision. Um, it would mean that any development that would take place within 250 feet of the actual pond's edge uh, would require a shoreline permit. Uh, I don't believe that, uh, much of the 250 foot zone touches where we're proposing for development. I think, uh, it pretty much touches right along the edge of the wetland, uh, that we've got in, in this location here. Uh, we did do, uh, two test pits per lot, uh, at the back of the site, uh, we have some really good fine, uh, granular soils out there with some pretty deep, uh, seasonal high water tables and no, uh, ledge found on site. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have, and then would plan to, uh, submit very shortly for your uh, December, uh, Planning Board meeting, uh, for an eventual conclusion of the project.
Thank you very much, go ahead, Jeff.
Hey, I have a question, so in a letter forwarding, uh, asking for the review, the application for review, October 13th, uh, you state Surveying and Engineering has conducted a full survey of the parcel, comma, which includes a full topographical analysis and a wetland analysis, end quote. But then you're asking for a waiver, and then it says, well, in a separate letter, by denial of this waiver, Mr. DiBerto would be forced into a complete wetland topographical survey of the remainder of their land, end quote. So one letter says, you did a full topographical analysis of wetland analysis, but your, your request for a waiver says you didn't, uh, wha- what's the story?
So we did a, we did an analysis of the site, meaning, uh, we've walked much of that area, um, and I guess I should use, uh, different words, uh, next time in my narrative. Um, and we also had Jack, um, walk and flag the entire site, so we have a, a sketch of where the wetlands are onsite, and using those two, uh, items is how we determined where, uh, the focus point would be on, on the actual survey grade information is that we provide to you, so. Uh, in my narrative, back to the board, Jeff, maybe I'll, um, I'll clarify those, those words and terms, so it's not so misleading, I guess.
All right, another question, uh, you show, so the access to both lots will be through the existing gravel driveway? How is, I don't see anything proposed for, currently there is no access. I guess driveway kinda loops a little bit about halfway into the proposed, uh, Lot 6, but, uh, it, then it ends down in Lot 61, down near your survey tie line. So where is access, how is the access gonna work if we, because I see it uh, proposed well up there, so where, where does the access go up into the upper lot?
So we would, and this is one of the details that we needed to sort of finalize, uh, for the full submission. So we would, and this is one of the details that we needed to sort of finalize for the full submission. We need to provide an easement around that entire driveway. And then we need to provide an extension of that easement over to the proposed lot to the north so that that access is finalized in a in a legal format. So we would provide an easement plan and then a proper shared access easement document for the board's review.
So where are you thinking that you're going to access? I assume, given the location of Leach Field and the proposed well, that somewhere to the northwest of the well is where a building would go. So how, where do you propose to have access to that area of the property?
So the applicant would propose to essentially extend this this neck of the existing driveway straight across linearly along the contour to this location and provide a proper easement around that so that you would gain access to this development zone.
Okay. So when, Chris, when was the this driveway constructed?
I don't have exact dates. I believe it was constructed in two thousand, late two thousand eighteen, early two thousand nineteen.
Is all the proper permits?
No, that's one of the things that we are working towards now. So he would have needed a wetlands permit. At the time, it would have been a minor wetlands permit for this crossing in this location. Now it would be because it's after the fact, we have to file a standard drink and fill wetlands application to to gain permission to essentially utilize the driveway that's been constructed.
The, as you know, because we've been through this before, the old requirement for fifteen inch culverts and you've got twelve inch culverts here. So I didn't see anything about a waiver for that requirement and a justification for why we ought to approve that waiver.
Honestly, I didn't consider that. I'll I'll have to review that and provide justification for that. Typically, those culvert requirements are for either site plan review or new roadway construction. But I'll review that requirement thoroughly and then I can report back to you.
I agree with you. I don't have my book open, but yeah, can you take a look at that?
Absolutely.
We do have a comment back from the fire chief that talks about the boat being at least twenty feet wide from the first slope road. Are you aware of that?
I'm aware of the comment, but I'm also aware that the fire chief has reviewed this driveway with the applicant in the past. And I believe was found to be sufficient. So I want one of the reasons that we filed a design review was I want to sit down with the fire chief and understand his concern and then get it in writing so that we can either address the concern if it still exists or move on if it does not. So that's a task item that we have so that we can be complete for the board next time.
Well, with the subdivision, in my mind anyway, it changes things slightly in that you no longer have a a single owner out there in their own house, which they have now are going to have a shared private drive. And you're going to have multiple residents out there. So I think that that road takes on a little bit more importance. Start having multiple parties using that same driveway.
Understood.
Chris, does he, does he take access to lot ten off that driveway?
Lot ten. Is that the lot to the south, Jamie?
Correct.
Yeah, he owns in a budding parcel. We don't, we're not providing, we're not currently providing any access to lot ten from this driveway.
And there's no structures on those, any of this piece currently?
There, there isn't, and I'd have to review how access would be taken if if he wants access from that drive, the newly built driveway to lot ten, we'd have to look and see how that could be done because I think there's a pretty large wetland that's sort of in the way there.
What about, where's the access? He's not taking access off that for lot seven, right? Is lot seven off Sloper Road?
No, lot seven, we don't, we don't own lot seven. So no, we're not providing any access off from lot seven. A little bit of their driveway, I think, lot seven's driveway that loops around in the back extends on our property just a little bit. But we're not providing access to them by any means.
All right. So I guess the it would be to address the waivers you would be requesting. Talking about limits of wetlands, required setback and two foot contour intervals, those would be the waivers you're going to be requesting with a full application, correct?
Yes, and then the potential to review culvert sizes for the driveways.
So knowing the board's status or stance on those three waivers. Anybody like to address those and their feelings on those three?
Just to clarify, Chris, so the width of the driveway at its narrowest is what? The driveway ranges between probably sixteen, seventeen feet at the moment. The NFPA Fire Code requires that fire lanes be twenty feet wide. Or if you're going to use a road as a fire access road, be twenty feet wide unless the AHJ Authority having jurisdiction decides that in specific instances due to topography, wetlands, or other mitigating circumstances that that twenty feet could be relaxed for whatever reason. So that's where Chief Walker is coming up with the with the twenty foot requirement. So Chief, Chief Walker, what is his position on the twenty foot requirement? Just review that for me, please. So Chief Walker, I think, is simply pointing out that NFPA one oh one, chapter eighteen, requires that a fire lane or fire access road, which is anything over fifty feet long. The new NFPA code is not well written for New Hampshire. Anything over fifty feet long is required to be twenty feet wide. And for instance, I joke about this a lot when I'm talking to regulators about this. My driveway, I live in a new residential subdivision and I can throw a bottle cap to the sidewalk, my driveway would have been required to be twenty feet wide to meet the NFPA code. So it's in that code, though, it allows the fire chief to make exceptions reasonable discretion based on things like topography, wetlands, and other circumstances or other amenities that are developed inside the subdivision. For instance, if you'll notice, there are pull offs in on the driveway that has been built. And those pull offs happen at a regular interval. And that's one of the other, you know, mitigating circumstances that oftentimes the AHJ can review in relaxing the actual width. So those are all things that I would like to work out with with Chief Walker before coming back to the board.
What's the total length of the driveway?
I don't know.
Because I know I've had this discussion with Chief Walker. You you discussed the turnouts. And basically, if it goes back farther than a thousand feet, then there should be turnouts about every five hundred feet so that you can get vehicles out of the way and also to provide for getting the equipment carrying around and out safely.
Yeah. So I mean, there's if I had to guess, the the driveway is about twenty-eight hundred feet long, twenty-nine hundred feet long, something to that effect.
And I see the first turnout there. There, there seems to be one that's probably about eight hundred feet in.
Yes, yep. Yeah, and this is about this location here.
So Chris, wouldn't it be safest as development escalates, this is a modest change, but you know, bit by bit, things change. There's the width of the road is is one factor that we think is important. We understand that. And also as straight as possible would be best. Could the neck at least be made a bit straighter and perhaps routed, you know, not totally moving giant mountains of dirt, but adjusting the contour a little bit further from the prime wetlands?
Well, we looked at that. So
This road is already built, right? This driveway, just the driveway is existing?
Yes, yes, the driveway is existing. But, you know, to Steve's point, if the driveway weren't built, then, you know, an applicant should be putting together an alternatives analysis. So, you know, why, why does the driveway curve in, say, this location or in another location, or why does it, why is it constructed so close to the to the wetlands buffer? There are good reasons for those, Steve. I'm not prepared to discuss each one of those in depth tonight. But I can certainly put together what what would be an alternatives analysis. There are large sloping outoutcrops in some areas of this, and the driveway was designed around those. There are areas of ledge. Those were, you know, the driveway was designed around those. And then there are steeper sections at the entrance to this roadway, for instance, where there are some large cuts and really the driveway had to be built in the center of the the width of the lot so that those cuts could be maintained without disturbing abutting lands. So I'd be happy to put together sort of a description as to why the road way landed where it landed so that the board understands why it was constructed where it was.
I'd be delighted if you could consider at least a few points where things could be made a bit more robust or safer or straighter, those sorts of things.
Another question is this, this lot was created as part of a subdivision ninety-one prior to the wetland buffers. But if you're going to subdivide this, then all of a sudden those regulations kick in. Does that have any impact on the developability of these lots once subdivided?
Well, what it has an impact on is if Chief Walker would require the roadway to be widened, I think we'd want to know that now and maybe undertake that work now. But no, it would not impact the developability of lots if the buffers were applied to the building areas. There's ample building area out there without any encroachment on the on the buffer. The driveway obviously would encroach upon the buffer, but that would have already been built.
Hey, Chris, this is Ron Allard. The neck, we have, looks like you have on lot six one, you have like a twenty-five feet of the neck belonging to lot six one, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't think that complies. I think my read of the regulations should be fifty fifty. And so I think it, to me, the subdivision line should move when the road gets wider, it should move.
Okay, I'll I'll review that and we can look at adjusting that if need be.
Yeah, so fifty fifty, i.e. twenty-five feet, but that, yeah, I think the fifty fifty applies, not the i.e. twenty-five feet. And Sloper Road is a class five or better?
Yes.
Okay.
And there will be, so there will have to be a right of way for lot six or there seems to be, because of the way that it meanders, there's got to be some kind of right of ways there for access into lot six off of the gravel drive constructed across lot six one.
Jeff, I think it's going to be the right of ways both ways.
There's going to be cross easements. That's right. Yep. So so we're going to, what we're proposing to do is basically fit an easement around, you know, a logical easement. So you know, twenty twenty-five, something to that effect around the driveway and then dimension it so that there would be cross easements so that one lot has the ability to drive over the other lot.
So Chris, basically, you're going to, so that doesn't share the the neck all the way, you'll probably have to, may have to ask for some type of waiver with some portion. Do you think? Because of the regulations, actually, you're beyond the neck really when you get down here. But depending on how you lay it out, if you're not, like Ron had said, if you're not taking your road down the middle, depends where you split off, I think.
Okay.
Chris, what's the maximum grade of the driveway as it currently currently exists?
I haven't calculated that. It's not, it's not especially steep, but I'll, I can calculate that and have an answer for you.
That'd be great. There's some close topo lines and a few spots that may be curious.
Sure.
And I bring it up because you asked for a waiver on topography.
Yep.
Given that you've locked the lots, you've gone around a perimeter, why is it you don't want to put on the drawing all required setback? It seems like you've got almost everything there already.
I think the only, I think the only reason not to, Jeff, is what I don't want to do to a future owner is imply that you could build anywhere on the lot. If there are other wetlands that affect the lot, or there are other steep slopes that affect a lot, or some other restriction that's shown, you know, would be otherwise shown on a topographic plan. I don't want to imply that you could build somewhere when you actually can't. So I would like to limit us showing the setback lines to the known to the known areas. Now, that doesn't mean that if somebody doesn't sure and and Steve buys one of these lots and wants to build in an area different than where we show, you know, additional topo was always done then and and proving out that you could build there is done at that point.
Yeah, I think it's, we make a note. What's that? Is it considered a backlot? Park chop?
By the town regulations, it's a backlot.
So were you meeting all the requirements as a backlot?
You have to have a total of fifty feet and you can share that between the two lots. And they got seventy-five, so he actually has more width than he needs.
I think it's not you can share, you have to share.
Yes.
Well, correct. The reason why I said it that way, if it was only one backlot, you get a fifty feet. But if you have two backlots, then you share the fifty.
All right. So are we feeling as though we're okay with a waiver for limits of wetland as currently delineated? Or will we be asking for more? If that waiver comes about with a full application, I guess we'll do one at a time, just so Chris has an idea of where we stand.
Well, if there was already a mistake around around the wetland crossing. it seems like maybe it, it should be done thoroughly this time.
You are doing the area of the road, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's been completed and is shown on this plan.
Right. And you're doing the area, you just, it's kind of not the, the top part of the 30 acres that you're not doing, really.
That's right.
It's the part that's not being subdivided off.
Right.
And then 27, all required setbacks. Does anybody have an issue? Would any, was anybody have a specific issue to that one? And the two-foot contour topography, I think Steve, you mentioned asking for a little bit more info in certain areas, but as a general, would we be satisfied with pretty much what we're seeing today?
If I know, if I know what the grade is in the worst spots, that's fine.
Anybody else have issues or questions concerning that? So when he comes back, we're not surprising with-
None on that. John, I'm sorry, do you know off the top of your head what the, where the requirements are for backlots?
They're in zoning and subdivision both. The ones on the dimensions are in zoning.
Page 51, Jeff.
Thanks, sir.
At the top of the page of 51.
In zoning?
The dimensional requirements, Jeff, are in-
No, subdivision, subdivision regulations.
So it'd be page 51 in subdivision.
Okay, I didn't think they were in-
Zoning just implies that they're a permitted use.
And Jeff, I did re, I did review that. I think it complies as long as they split the neck 50-50, not 25 feet.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. You brought that up. I wanted to go back and look at the requirement. The other thing is that I, I was, the reason I wanted, I knew there were some words in here about backlots being unsubdividable unless additional lots conform to town zoning and subdivision. My, my concern there was, especially with respect to the driveway, is the lot 6 that will remain after 6-1 is, is divided off. I mean, that's still, how many acres, Chris?
So Jeff, all it really, all it really does is if you wanted to go beyond the two lots, they would actually have to build a subdivision road, is what they would have to do out there.
Right.
Yeah, the first part of the, first, first thing clause there, Jeff, is two lots maximum. Two backlots maximum.
Right, right. And so I, I'm just, Chris, so the owner understands that you can't turn around and do this and then try to subdivide 6 further, correct?
No, you could, you just have to build a subdivision road.
Oh, okay.
Right, but with a 50-foot neck, you wouldn't be able to do that.
You're, you're developing an actual road. Town, town spec road.
Right, and you would need, you would need both of these lots to develop a road through here.
Yeah.
But yes, Jeff, he and I have discussed that the backlog ordinance is, is applied to two lots only and that's all.
Okay, I, I just, just checking. As this is a design review, so we can just have an open discussion.
Sure.
All right. Do we have anything else?
It is 50 feet at frontage.
It's 75 feet of frontage.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
Because, because of the radius, there's a weird little radius at the entrance. I think somebody at some point designed the frontage subdivision, assuming that a roadway system would be developed out here.
Do we need to open, should we open public comment on this, Marcia, or?
Just a disclosure, it was posted.
All right, well, let's do that. We'll do that this time, open for public comment. If anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, we'll, happy to hear them. Hearing none, we'll close public comment.
Hey, I had a, I got a question procedurally. Marcia, so this was an application for a design review. Should we have accepted the application or?
I think you're all right with not accepting it. We reviewed it, but you do have to take a vote on whether to close, close the design review.
Yep, that's where I was going next, which is why I asked if we had to vote on opening it. Because I knew we, we normally take a vote on closing the design review if, if Chris Berry has gotten all the information that he needs.
Well, Jamie opened basically the public hearing on it, so, and closed the public hearing, so, yeah.
All right. Anybody? Yep.
I was just gonna say, and I don't mean to belabor Jeff's point, but to Jeff's point, if the board had felt as though I had not provided sufficient information for a design review, they also could have determined that as a form of incompleteness. Have to find that it is complete for design review.
So would you like to take a vote?
To accept it or to close it?
As, as complete for design review. To be real.
Which is a whole lot lower standard than a regular application.
Yeah, because basically, design review is, is providing, you know, I, I think it's very flexible for the applicant because they're providing information to the board to help them further develop their application.
All right, well, for the sake of completeness, we will, a motion to-
Actually, Jamie, I, I hate to interrupt, but does, if this, if we say it's got to complete enough information, is that basically saying we're not going to require the, the additional work on lot 6?
No, well, you, everything you do today was, is, is a recommendation anyway. There's nothing that formally holds you, although I would think, you know, to any of these decisions, and that's basically in the RSA. These are advisory comments.
Well, well, two things. First, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all we're saying is that the applicant has provided sufficient information for us to conduct a design review. And so that, that, you know, would be a reason to accept it. It doesn't mean that all the details are there, it's just that sufficient information for the board to do its job as part of the designer.
Good explanation.
All right, so how about a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the application 213-6-GR-20 for a design review.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Steve Diamond. James Jennison, aye, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Application of design review accepted. Now a motion, if Mr. Berry is ready to close design review.
Yep, I've, I've got what I need.
All right, a motion to close the design review process.
I make a motion to close the design review on application 213-6-GR-20 design.
I second that.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Donna Masucci, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Steve Diamond.
I'm aye.
James Jennison, aye, Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Motion to close design review approved. All right, Mr. Berry, thank you very much. Does anybody need a quick break before we move on to the next one?
Yeah, I'll take-
Belabor this, but, okay. We can do a quick, quick five. All right, it looks like we're still, Ron, are you back?
Yes.
All right, we got, Donna, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
And Steve, how about you?
Yep.
Jeff? Jeff? He's coming. We got enough to keep going, but we'll give him another minute here. Throw my agenda. All right, Jeff's back. Thank you, Chris, for being patient. We're moving on to number six, 23816V20, Drew Pond LLC. Let you get to it.
So again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering. We received approval from the board for this project and we had asked for an extension the beginning of this year to, I believe, the beginning of next year. And as we were working through our state permitting, it became obvious that there were enough plan revisions that I felt that we should come back to the board and discuss them with you. So I'll just, I'll start working through. I, I know you all got my comment letter and feel free to jump in if there are things that I've glassed over that you'd like to discuss in more detail. The most major of revisions, the alteration terrain permit that we put together and submitted for review, took into consideration that there was nitrogen impaired waters downstream. And when we compiled the design and application, a remedy for nitrogen from construction projects and development projects was, at the time, infiltration. And by the time we had applied for alteration of terrain, they had, they hadn't modified their rules, but they had written essentially a memo to all the consultants that, that they would no longer be accepting infiltration as a means of mitigating nitrogen. And essentially, the only way to modify phosphorus and nitrogen, if you'll remember the Meeting House Road project, is an anaerobic system commonly known as a gravel wetland. And so the rain gardens that we had designed in this location here are from Oldenburg and the large infiltration rain garden that we had designed here are from Hanoverian. Those needed to be modified to become gravel wetlands in this particular case. Because of those changes, the flow characteristics changed, but they're not substantial. Essentially, we're detaining more water and treating more storm flow at the higher events prior to discharge into the, the downstream wetlands. Another item that changed in the plans, DOT originally, when we had a pre-application meeting with DOT, we showed them a cistern in this location. And the response we got at the time was, yes, that has been done before. Well, when we filed our DOT application, it was brought to our attention that that would not be permitted. And so we worked with Chief Walker to move the cistern into the interior of the project and place it in this location here. It still does not meet the 1,000-foot rule, but if the board will remember, they granted a waiver to that based on the chief's recommendation. And so the chief has recommended that this be the next best place for the cistern for the two projects. Additionally, DOT asked us to make some other minor changes, the largest of the changes they wanted. We had a dual bay exit here, so we had a left, right turn exit off from Hanoverian as it enters onto Route 9. They asked us to remove the left bay or the right, dedicated right turn bay- They asked us to remove the left bay or the right, dedicated right turn bay in that instance, because it was not warranted by the traffic counts created by the project. I think that that's short sighted, but there's really nothing I can do about that. So we removed the, the right turn bay from the project, and we've resubmitted all of their comments back to them. Additionally, we are working with a new sewage disposal system, and what that's allowed us to do is simplify a lot of the septic systems on site. So if the board will remember, we had at least, on the Hanoverian side, we had at least two other septic systems in the upper section here. We've been able to combine all of the, the flow to those and place them into a geomat system here on the lower side. And then if the board will remember, we had at least one or two other septic systems scattered across the back of this project site, and we've been able to combine flows between the buildings to minimize the number of systems that are required on the Oldenburg site. At the back of each one of these buildings, we have found through modification in the residential construction, a way of removing some of the steeper slopes and walls at the back of the sites. And because of that, the applicants want to place specifically on Hanoverian Drive, they want to place decks at the back of the units that are proposed here. And so we put a little curve in the roadway at the top of Hanoverian Drive to swing those units away from the buffer to accommodate the request of the applicant. Other minor changes in the plan set, the buildings, each of the buildings have changed in footprint, just a small amount, we're talking feet. So in some instances, they wanted a little wider unit, a little deeper unit. In other instances, they wanted a more narrow unit and a little less deep unit. And so those have been modified throughout the site and provided in the detailed site plans. Working with my assistant project manager on this, we, the original thought was to provide the board with only the plans that change. And I think what we failed to realize until after Marcia got the application and the plans were sort of out of our hands, there, there were very few plans that did not change, because everything is sort of connected to each other. And so I apologize in advance if this is a confusing submittal from us. Like, it was, it was actually intended to not be a confusing submittal. But after talking with Marcia, I realized why it might be considered a little confusing. We also came in and sat down with Marcia in our prior conditions of approval and re-allocated the notes that needed to be modified to the new conditions, so that the conditions of approval match page numbers and note numbers and things like that in this, in this congruent plan set. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you guys might have for me.
One of the things that I guess state drove me to do was you, you had some mailboxes down and as you entered, which one is it? Oldenburg or?
Oldenburg, yep.
So where did those go to?
I believe they're still there.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no, there was no reason to change the mailbox locations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chris, could you, you said something about moving rock walls, could you drag that past me again?
Oh, yes, so the rear of these units here specifically, so on Oldenburg Drive behinds units four through 12, because of the steep grade that's behind the structure, we had originally proposed a retaining wall. So you'd come out of the back of the unit, and then instantly you were faced with a retaining wall to retain the hill behind you. And what we've done is modified the construction of the units so that the concrete in the walls, the basement walls, are a little bit higher and have done a little bit different design of the back to remove that retaining feature. It's expensive, it makes the back of the unit a little bit unusable. And so I think at the end of the day, we have a much better product for this design.
But there's still decks on the back of those units?
Yes, yeah.
I seem to remember in previous discussions, there were some questions around, for instance, fire truck turn, turnarounds at the far perimeter of the property. Does that curve you added make that a problem at all?
No, it doesn't. And it actually, before I opened my mouth, Steve, I wanted to check, it actually makes that turning radius easier to maneuver.
We had asked for installation of some curving on, in a variant drive up where the, it makes that bend coming down past where the, the new gravel access road will be. How does installation of the fire cistern, does, changes the drainage in that area? Does that have any impact on that?
No, it doesn't, because we ended the, we ended the curb in that area prior to that first reverse curve that's there, Jeff. So that was all open drainage to begin with.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Chris, I don't know if I'm just missing it, but there was the question about the location of the mailboxes over on Oldenburg? I can't seem to find them either.
So I think I'll zoom in here.
Yeah, I'm just, maybe it's.
I think, I think that's what this, this box is, right here.
Where's that?
Right at the entrance of Oldenburg.
Oh, okay, all right, I just not.
Yeah, I think I did finally find that on a, on a plan somewhere.
It'd be on the detailed shape, detailed site plan for Oldenburg. But it's also shown on, it's shown on the overview right here, everything that's shown on the detail is also on the overview. Structurally.
Okay.
Yeah, Marcia, if you look at sheet eight, it identifies the postal box location. I, I'm with you, Chris, I, the state may tell you that the, the turn lane was unnecessary, but why would they ask you to eliminate it? Why, why did they care?
I don't know, they, they've done this to me, one other instance, I actually designed a gas station in Milton, and we had a, a right, a dedicated right turn bay, and they said it's not warranted, please remove it. And in my opinion, it just reduces queuing at an intersection and reduces the antiness of people trying to turn onto the highway. But I, you know, there's, there's nothing I can do about it. Essentially, we're told you're not going to get a permit the way it is, so you have to modify it.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I just don't understand it. Doesn't make sense.
You should spend a day with me.
If someone's trying to turn left and turn right in the two cars side by side, one blocks the other one, if they got a small vehicle and a big vehicle, and where there's plenty of room for queuing, it may be safer to queue and wait, I don't know.
Could be.
Chris?
Nope, no, no parking signs were addressed at the cistern and hammerheads. That was one note from the chief. Are those in there, Chris?
I think those were original conditions of approval, and, and we'll ensure that they're on the final plans.
Okay.
Chris, I, in, I've been on this resiliency committee with regional planning, and, and we're looking at things such as climate disruption. And one thing I have on my radar is fire risk, wildfires, for instance. I wonder if, so the aesthetics, the, of, of having the staggered blocks is nice, so it's not just one big square rectangle. But I wonder if it would be sensible to have a separation somewhere between some of these buildings, the boat, largest blocks of buildings.
So what the site plan doesn't really feder out, Steve, is these are protected buildings, so they're sprinkled buildings. And they're also, there are firewalls between each unit, so they're sub, they're basically subdivided between the buildings. So they're, from a fire code standpoint, they're actually separate structures. And then the fire code requires, in this instance, only a minimum of 15 feet, half of the typical 30-foot separation is required because of the construction style.
All right, if nobody has any other questions, should we make a motion to accept the application?
Yeah, is this, again, is this a new application, is this the existing application with changes?
It, it's an amended application, but you still should accept it as complete, because they've submitted the information. And as with the other one, I've co-mingled the, the notice of decision to make sure we what was from before and, and the current, anything current.
So a motion to accept the amended application as complete.
I make a motion to accept 238-116-V-20-amended as complete.
I second that.
Whoops.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Donna Masucci, Ron Allard.
Allard, I, you caught me by surprise, they're going first this time, Jamie.
I like to mix it up, Steve Diamond.
He just wanted to see if you were still awake.
You're not Steve Diamond, Diamond, I.
James Jensen, I. Donna Masucci.
Masucci, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Application is accepted as complete. Move right into the public hearing if there's no other comments. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Sharon Reynolds, I'm speaking for Linda Reynolds, who's in a butter to the Oldenburg Drive part of the property.
Okay, could you, could you just give your address as well, Sharon, please?
My address or her address?
Yours.
My address is 34B Court Street, Dover, New Hampshire, 0380. And do you need her address?
We got it on the plan, I think we'll, thanks, we'll be all right with that.
Okay, my question is about the Oldenburg Drive part of the property, and it's regarding, is there, I didn't see it on the plan, is there a deceleration lane at all, or no? Coming in from the west side of the property? I'm sorry.
Chris is shaking his head, yeah, there is not, Chris is shaking his head, no, there is no deceleration lane for either one, correct, Chris?
That's right. Again, deceleration lane is not warranted by the traffic numbers per our traffic engineer, and so DOT is not requiring a deceleration lane.
So my question for the town of Barrington, is there any plan to lower the speed limit? Because now you'll have 40 people coming and going from Oldenburg and Hanoverian, and then you have the other development village place, and then you, across the street, you have the middle school. So I get my question, and is there any plan in the foot in the town of Barrington to lower the speed limit to say 35 miles an hour?
I, I'll let Marcia speak to that, I don't believe that we control the speed limit, it takes a little bit more than our, our wanting to, unfortunately. But Marcia can elaborate a little bit, I think.
That's, that's correct, I mean, that's a state highway, and the state, it state regulates what goes on there. I know when the middle school went there, there was some pushback, and John probably has a better memory of it than, than I. But a lot of what this is gonna do is, you know, there, there, the DOT is more concerned about keeping traffic moving than they are about people waiting on the side roads to it. And I think sometimes we anticipate more, more issues than actually arise, especially from a development such as this. There's not going to be many, as many trips, I believe, coming out of that than one would imagine. They're going to be spread out, but I do understand her concern.
There won't be much from this one, but there will be from, from all of them put together. It's really the broader question that we need to think about, because it's not one housing development, it's all of them, anyway.
Correct, correct, but that's also what goes into DOTs. When they review these applications, and I think Chris could speak to that, they spend a lot of time analyzing and going over them. We may not always agree with their, what, what their results are, but they're not done without a good measure of thought.
Is there anyone, my contact at the DOT to follow up on my concerns?
Sure, Division Sex in, in Durham would be the place to, place to start. They're the District Sex, they're the ones that handle the Barrington end of, of DOT.
And Marcia, just, oh, go ahead.
Is there a particular person or contact?
James Hewitt is the one who does the driveway permits out there, so I suppose that would be a, a start.
Great. Thank you.
And Marcia, maybe you could, yeah, and maybe you could speak to the, the side, where are we at with sidewalks? As part of, that doesn't go that far, does it?
It does, well, actually, and, and we can, I was talking to regional planning, right now, on the sidewalks from, say, Christmas Lane down to the middle school have been added to the 10-year plan, and DOT supposedly have started some preliminary review. There is the possibility of getting that into the TAP program, which is the TAP Transportation Alternative Program, and that possibly we could get taken care of within five years. So that'll be submitting for the TAP grant, which I told Colin that we would be interested in.
Is, is there a chance that sidewalks could go as far as the Village Place development, or no?
Um, I, I, I think it would be a matter of cost, I, I would try, I mean, that's something to discuss, I thought of that too after. It is, it is more, farther than I thought between Village Place and the middle school. But by all means, it makes sense if we would have, you know, kids possibly walking that way. So I can have that discussion with regional planning and see if there is any way that, that we can even the possibility of phasing in, because I, we talked about sidewalks and in other, if spreading out further within the town, if the board remembers right when we were looking at locating sidewalks.
Well, is there another possibility that we can move forward to get the sidewalks and, and make the, the application to get it up to the middle school? And then maybe the town could continue it from middle school up to Village Place?
Yeah, I mean, these aren't cheap, I, I will tell you, just, just what was, we were proposing initially to the middle school, I want to say the rough estimate was $750,000. So putting in sidewalks with granite curbs and everything is, is not an inexpensive proposition. But we'll, we'll do what we can, and if we have to do things in a phased way, then we can, we can look at doing it that way.
Yeah, and that was a tangent, but I thought, Ms. Reynolds, you may be interested to know that sidewalks are in the future, possibly. Did you have other questions?
No, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, have a wonderful night, is there anybody else that would like to ask questions or raise concerns? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Final questions from the board?
Final questions from the board?
I, I think we are in a good position to, to take, take advantage of transportation alternative funding, given the corridor study and the projections of, excuse me, of, of traffic problems at the 90125 intersection. We should remember as we think about traffic in this area that eventually the COVID crisis will be over and people will drive again. And the projections, the long-term projections were, that are coming due soon, were, were not great.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll read the draft notice of decision.
Jamie, one thing before we go to that, I know in the last project, we talked about not requiring this to go back to engineering. I would strongly go along with that for this one, considering almost the vast majority of these changes are directly related to DOS, DE, depart, DOT and DES requirements.
Yeah, and I, I, I would second that. I, I see no benefit from sending it back at this point. I think the overall plan hasn't changed, but some of the treatment has changed. But that's all per DES requirements. And they, they obviously, given the number of significant comments, they scrub this thing rigorously. And so I, I, I just don't see any benefits sending it back for another engineering.
Was there any on, anyone on the board that disagrees? All right. Very good. Dear applicant, this is from former to the Barrington Planning Board at November 3rd, 2020 meeting has conditionally approved your application referenced above. Waivers granted, 12-2-1, Table 1 of the subdivision regulations, minimum tangent of 100 feet between reverse curves. 12-2-1, Table 1 of the subdivision regulation, shoulder width of six feet and a cut and three feet in fill. 12-7, Table 2, maximum of 2% of a road grade within 100 feet of an intersection. 12-8-8, parents four, and 12-8-9, no ditches at grades above 8%, which require curbing, coverths and basins, or at grades above 6% when the developed length exceeds 250 feet. 4-7-7, parents one, minimum pipe diameter 15 inches in any drain system. 4-12-2, lighting requirements, 3-1-3, cross-sections. 4-14-1, parents one, full traffic impact analysis. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plan is required prior to the commencement of any site work or recording of, recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified and approved, an approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months of the day, the board's approval will be considered elapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedence, road names must be compliant with E911 and approved by the town. HOA documents approved by town attorney. Correct note 21 on page seven to read, building addresses will be assigned through the assessing office. Add note, required erosion control measures shall be installed prior to any disturbance of the site surface area and shall be maintained throughout the completion of construction activities. If during construction it becomes apparent that additional erosion control measures are required to stop any erosion on the construction site due to actual site conditions, the owner shall be required, required to install the necessary erosion protection at no expense to the town. Add wetland stamp and signatures to the final plan. Add owner's signature to the final plan. Add required permit numbers, sheet one. Provide complete septic designs and construction approval numbers. Provide well-permit numbers and final water design. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3 with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meaning the conditions of approval upon receipt of an executed bond for all improvements excluding buildings. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11 by 17 in PDF format with supporting documents to the town records. General subsequent conditions, where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by a majority vote of the board so long as it is applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of road, storm drains and improvements indicated on the site plan for RSA 63439. The engineer shall certify the improvements have been installed as designed prior to the issuance of a certificate of our concierge use.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just because I noticed, noticed this. Is this, are these going to be condominiums? Because we don't have anything about providing condominium documents or anything like that, Chris.
They're not proposed to be condominiums right away. They're set up as condos. So in the event that they are condoized, we would need to come back for a subdivision approval.
Okay.
Grant an, an extension to this project before?
Yes.
So how does the time limits in this notice of decision affect the extensions that we've already ran?
It believes, my understanding is we'll start again with this.
Okay, so these will supersede the previous extension?
Yes. I'm good.
No other questions, a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve application 238-16-V-20-amended.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Donna Masucci.
Masucci, I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond eye.
Jeff Fran.
Fran, I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
James Jensen, I. Five in favor, congratulations. Thanks for your time. Hope you feel better. You as well.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. All right. Reports from other committees, unfinished business?
When did, Barbara, do you remember, when do we plan? Is it at the next meeting? We planned to finally take that vote on the master plan that we put off?
Yes, it is the next meeting.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, can one of you send me the final draft so I can take a look? Email it to me or something?
Sure, it hasn't changed since the last one that was provided. They didn't make any changes at the last public hearing.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Oh, okay. We'll email that out to you.
All right.
Actually, Marcia, could you, could you include me in that email? Because I was looking for it. Maybe I deleted the email. I don't know why I did. I couldn't find it either.
Does anyone else want it?
Just send it out to everyone, Barbara, probably through the group, group planning board email and send it out that way. Okay.
Do they want hard copies?
No, I, I, for me, I, I'll just read on email.
Barbara, I hate to say it, but I would like a hard copy.
That's all right, Ron. Anyone else?
Email's fine by me.
All right, thank you.
Emails.
All right. Thank you. You hear that? Barbara, Donna said email's fine by her too. Minutes for October 20th?
The chair, I'm going to recuse myself because I was not at the last meeting.
Fair enough. Anyone else? All right, a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes as written.
I second that. Motion by Ron Allard, second by Steve Diamond, Donna Masucci.
I.
James Jensen, I. Steve Diamond.
I.
Ron Allard.
I.
Minutes approved as written.
All right, I rejoined the meeting.
All right.
Is this open?
Anything else? Nope, we got a adjourn to, a motion to adjourn until November 17.
I make a motion to adjourn to November 17.
I happily second that.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Steve Diamond.
All right.
Donna Masucci.
I.
James Jensen, I. Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Jeff Fran.
Fran, I.
Meeting adjourned. This concludes our broadcast day. Have a great night, everyone.
Stay safe, wear a mask.
Go Trump.